Okay, Mr. Lamb, I believe we've all been muted and Mrs. Nelson is here.
All right, so before we start, Ryan, I need your confirmation you can hear us and please respond with a yes.
Yes.
Or Clark.
Can you hear him?
Chris, thank you, Clark. Kristi, can you hear us?
Yes.
All right, Becky?
Yes.
Thank you. So tonight we've got two items. So I'm going to call in to order our public meeting. We have one action item that is a board we need to vote on and then we'll move into the work session to address the schedule or the plan to return to school. So for that action item, I'll turn it to Dr. Clint Denning.
Thank you, Mr. Lamb, and tonight we are here to share a bit of information about buyouts for teachers that are going to start the school year with us and would be eligible to the rule of 85. And from that, I'm going to turn over to Mrs. Gross, our CFO, to go over the details of the resolution and timeline.
Thank you, Dr. C. So before you, you have a resolution for the Certified Teacher Retirement Incentive. This proposal would serve a couple of purposes. Some of our teachers of retirement age may be reluctant to return to school due to COVID. And the second purpose would be a buyout puts us in a position to be able to weather enrollment declines and/or budget cuts that we know are eventually inevitable. This would be the eligible teachers would satisfy the TURF requirements for retirement. They would be at least 55 years of age and meet the service requirements in years that are required by TURF. The terms of the buyout include a lump sum payment of $12,000 and plus a buyout of accrued sick days at a rate of $90 per day. If this resolution is approved, a communication will be sent tomorrow requiring those interested to respond by midnight on Thursday. Requests will be considered on a first come, first served basis based on budget availability.
Tina, when you send that email out, will you copy the board on that? Just so if we have any questions, we can see the data, we can reference back to that.
I certainly will.
Thank you. For the board, do you have any questions for Tina or Dr. Clint Denning? Okay, we have an action item then to pass this. Do I have a motion?
I'll move for approval.
Thank you, Kristi. Ryan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so the motion passes. So we Mr. Gross, you can send that email out tomorrow to all the parties. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So with that, I will
Reminder also on communication, want to thank FCTA and Mr. Harris and his team. They're going to also reach out to all the FCTA members tomorrow to share that information. And then we will make sure all teachers get communicated. So we don't want anybody to miss an opportunity and miss communications. I want to let everybody know that as well.
Good. Thank you for sharing that. Okay, with that, I will close the public meeting and then we'll open up the work session so we can talk about the plans for return to school. Again, I'll turn it over to Dr. C.
Thank you, Mr. Lamb. Over the last several months, obviously, we've had a conversation about what school's going to look like in the fall. And we had to wait through May to get to June to see what IDOE and the Indiana Health Department recommended. And then from that, we embarked on a journey with several teams, including administrators, parents, to look at coming back to school with the goal of mitigating the virus so that it doesn't spread, so that we can spend 180 days in school to ensure that our guiding principle of individual student growth reigns supreme. And then third is to have that safe learning environment for both teachers and students. And so with that, tonight, we're here to present our plan for reentry. And I wanted to start off and stress to the board and the entire community that this plan is going to continue to be a flexible plan as the dynamics change throughout what's going on with COVID-19 in Johnson County. We're going to continue to rely on our expert, and that's Dr. Mormon and the Health Department. Because if you look at all the guidance, both from the CDC at the federal level to the state, they keep going back to your local health expert, and that is Dr. Mormon. So we'll continue to review with him. We have done that. Mr. Lamb, Mr. Sewell and I sat down with him and went over our plan and items to that that you're going to hear about in just a few moments. But ultimately, we want mom and dad to make the best decision for their family about coming back to school. We're excited to have everybody back. We want to see all the kids and the teachers. We also want a safe environment. So tonight, we're going to share that information about what we believe is a way to mitigate, provide academic growth for our kids, and protect both teachers and students and staff. And so tonight, we're going to hear from five different domains of that plan. We're going to hear from academics, as well as operations, and then special education. There's a lot of questions about special education. Last time, we went to at-home learning. Social-emotional learning, we know that it's more than just a virus that's going to have an impact, and that's our mental state and what's going on. And Mrs. Spurling is going to share that. And then Mr. Sprout's going to kind of wrap up and talk about the technology, because there is going to be a technology component, and actually a very large technology component as we travel forward in the year 2020, 2021 for our students. And so with that, I would like to remind everybody that in our guiding principles, we do have a guiding principle of systemic continuous improvement. And so we've looked at a lens that provides us with the best possible options for our school district. We talked about the Plan Do Study Adjust Model. We also had Mr. Lamb and Mr. Garrett sit in on a presentation and Mr. Sprout facilitated. We're still working through that plan and that process as we move on. We want to make sure that we are getting our answers and the best discovery of information available to share with people. And so that's our model. We'll continue to use that model and we'll continue to share. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Warland, who's going to present the academics journey for reentry to Franklin Community Schools.
Thank you. Can everyone hear me? Dr. Clint Denning, can you give me a thumbs up?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yes, I'm going to start with academics. And I just, I want to mention, or maybe second, a couple of things that Dr. Clint Denning just noted. We are ready and will be ready, will be ready, for learning on Wednesday, August 5th. We are excited to welcome our students and staff back to our buildings. And I hope the community, those of you that are with us, you're excited as well, that your students are getting excited. And I know there are still lots of uncertainties. So we'll talk a little bit about that this evening. We have an amazing faculty and staff. I know many of you know that. We have some on this call. Our staff and our faculty are creative, flexible, compassionate. I want to make sure that we take a minute, and we've talked about this a lot at the admin level, to thank everyone who's been involved in the reentry planning process. There have been a lot of hours that have been involved. And I think it's important that we recognize those who have done that work. We also want to thank those parents who've engaged in this process. As Dr. Clint Denning mentioned, we have had some representatives from our community engage with us. So thank you for your time. We're asking all of you, faculty, staff, our students, our board, our community, to come together. We're going to need to work alongside each other to maintain a mindset of flexibility and doability through this school year. And so we need to be nimble and ready to shift and adjust using those strategic those strategic thinking models that Dr. Clint Denning mentioned. So all of you, parents, guardians, reach out to us with your questions, because you ultimately decide what's in the best interest of your family. We anticipate that this will be an ongoing dialogue in order to achieve our goals. So as the academic team met our goal, and you see this on the slide, is to deliver instruction to advance individual student growth in ways that promote student and staff well-being and limit the spread of the coronavirus. So as we consider that goal, I'm going to touch on a few of the key strategies or the hows, if you will. How are we going to do this as we think about this next school year? First, we're going to reimagine how we do back-to-school and orientation events. We know these are important to many of our families, especially as you're transitioning students from building to building. But we're looking at virtual options, outside options, smaller group options. Our principals in our buildings will come up with a format that works best for their buildings and for our families. We anticipate that there will be lengthy student absences. We don't know yet what activity or the presence of the virus come the fall semester. But we need to be prepared for students who may be outside of our buildings for one week, two weeks, three weeks, four weeks. We just don't know. And so we are looking at plans and formats for how we keep students engaged who may be away from us for short periods of time. Our principals are also designing schedules that keep students in their classrooms as much as possible, especially at our elementary levels. We're also trying to minimize the mixing of students at our secondary levels. So what does that mean for how we schedule courses? Looking at blocks of time that may only involve four courses a day or five courses a day. How do we limit the number of transitions and maybe limit the length of those transitions? So those are key components that you will hear more about as we talk at the building level. Additionally, principals are looking for opportunities to get students and staff outside where there is less stress on our community members with regards to social distancing. And we've learned that from some of our conversations with Dr. Mormon and the medical professionals. We are also going to avoid field trips, convocations, and other non-essential large group gatherings in alignment with the Indiana Department of Education's guidance. We are considering virtual outside or other options where we can, especially so we can deliver some of those key academic standards, employability standards, and social-emotional learning opportunities for students. Principals in our K-6 buildings are crafting plans for recess. We value recess. We know it's important to our students. So we're just reimagining what that looks like. We're looking at smaller groups of students. In some of the buildings, we're looking at zones outside or in our recess structure where we can limit the number of students that are in those spaces. We also value small group instruction, and it's really a key component of much of our curriculum in our buildings, K through 12. And so principals and teachers, we've been talking about how we craft plans for safe small group interactions. So we've talked about masks. We've talked about sneeze guards, especially in our elementaries as teachers work with small groups of students during instructional time. We've talked about outside opportunities, shared Google documents, just different ways that students can still interact and connect with each other. Because our survey data from our students and from you, one of the things we heard is students miss some of that connection piece. And so how do we maintain that as we limit the spread of the virus and promote student and staff well-being? CBIS, Franklin Community Middle School and Franklin Community High School, will pause on assigning lockers at the opening of the school year. So at this time, students will be carrying bags to class. We will reevaluate that decision as we start school, especially as we approach the winter months, and we bring coats to school. But right now, we're trying to avoid large congregations of students in our hallways. It creates congestion in our hallways, and it's difficult for us to monitor some of that social distancing around those locker spaces. So at this time, we're going to pause on that particular component. Now I want to talk about virtual options. Franklin Community Schools will provide a virtual option for students in the upcoming school year. Elementary may look a little bit different from secondary, and that's where we need your help. This is really an action time or an action spot for our community, for our families and our guardians. We are trying to decide on the best format for Franklin Community Schools. So we're asking all of you to complete a short survey, and I mean short. Right now, it's only a couple of questions, other than your demographic information. So we plan to release the survey this week. Look for it as early as tomorrow. We ask that you complete a survey for every student in your household. We need to know what your family needs for the fall. We ask that you respond by Monday, July 6th. So it gives you some time to reflect on tonight's meeting, review some FAQs, ask questions this evening, and then really think about what's best for your family and engage in that conversation. Please spread the word and let others know. We will be sending out communication via all of our outlets. Finally, in the coming weeks, I will be pulling together some discussion groups to study and refine or study and adjust our at-home learning experience that we just had this past spring. If you would like to engage in one of these conversations, please message me. Send me an email. And again, encourage others to reach out to me as well who want to engage in that conversation. And I want to thank you. Now, Mr. Sewell is going to cover some additional key points. For our community members, we will entertain questions at the end of the presentation. I know the board may ask questions throughout. Feel free to send questions to the chat feature. I want to again say we're excited to welcome students back to our buildings in the fall, and I want to thank you. All of us want to thank you, our parents and our guardians, our daycare providers, for partnering with us in learning from this past spring in at-home learning. So thank you so much, and we look forward to continuing that partnership. Jeff?
All right. Thank you, Dr. Warland. I'd like to reiterate her appreciation for the work that our committees did. I had a great team that sat down with me over the course of a few weeks. And we set the goal for ourselves as we look at the operations of the corporation to conduct our operations in a way that provides safety and that really allows us to sustain that in-person experience that we all look forward to getting back to as we go back to school. And this is something we have to work together on. And so as we thought that through, the first key point we developed was that we need to kind of be encouraging and educating our staff and our students about just the everyday preventative measures that are going to help us sustain operations in our schools. And we're all familiar with these. We've seen them in the news. Can't go anywhere without there being discussion about sanitizing your hands, staying home when you're sick, avoiding those large gatherings. And so our first key factor is really just kind of making sure we have training and good signage and good communication around those kind of five key areas. Stay in home if you're sick or feeling ill, avoid large gatherings, practice social distancing. And we're going to use facial coverings when we can't sustain that six feet of separation. We're going to practice good health hygiene. We're going to wash our hands frequently, cover our cough and our sneeze, avoid touching our face and mouth. And then cleaning and disinfecting will be another point of emphasis as we move forward and in all areas of our operations. So our second key factor that the committee looked at was actually, okay, kind of getting a little bit more into the details of what those preventative measures are. Obviously, the five things that I just mentioned are kind of at the start of that. But in each operational area, there are specifics of what those things look like. So from the outset, one of the most important ones we will emphasize is that we need parents to help us keep students at home when they're not feeling well. If we can keep cases of COVID or possible COVID out of our schools, that is just critical to helping us sustain our ability to stay in school for in-person learning. So our daily announcements, our screening interview, interactions that we have with students in different times and activities during the day, and just reminders to parents will help us make sure that if we're not feeling well, the best thing to do is to stay home. The second thing that is on everybody's mind is how are we going to use facial coverings? And when are they going to be required? And how are they going to be required? And so on. And the best thing we can say about that right now is that we're going to work with Dr. Mormon and the Health Department to really make sure we're choosing the best combination of practices along those lines for the level of COVID spread and cases that are in our community at the time. And that may range from, may allow us to be a little bit more relaxed about it sometimes, but more stringent in other times. But in general, we're feeling like in those times when we cannot sustain our social distancing of six feet, such as on the bus, at our arrival and dismissal, in our hallways during our transition and passing periods, those will be key times when we will be asking students and staff to wear facial coverings. Again, we'll be in constant consultation with Dr. Mormon and the Health Department about that. So some of the other ways, just to kind of give you a sense of what school will look like on August 5th, our classrooms are being set up with our desks spaced facing the same direction. We've removed a lot of the unnecessary furnishings that will not only allow us to space those desks better, but allow our custodial services to clean and sanitize more effectively and quickly. We are installing hand sanitizer dispensers in every classroom. We're putting water bottle filling stations in every school. Sneeze guards in a lot of different settings around our buildings where face-to-face, close face-to-face interactions are going to occur. Our signage and floor markings will help us with our social distancing. Our heating and air conditioning systems, we're going to operate those at settings that optimize our fresh air. And then just, we are partnering with company to bring in some sanitizing equipment that uses a liquid that's very safe for contact. Now it'll help us be even more efficient and effective in cleaning and sanitizing every evening, but also touching up that as we need to during the day. So that's kind of at a high level, but in each operational area, we're kind of looking at how those preventative measures, what those look like in different key functions. I thought I'd touch on some of the ones that would probably be of most interest to the community as we move forward. So
Move on to that. Just want to kind of reiterate, because you just hit a couple of points that we've heard throughout the community that could be possible concerns, and that is, when are we going to be required to wear masks? And is that K-12? So if you could just, just to remind everybody and reiterate again, please, the requirement of masks, because we are going to require masks, and just remind them of those key points, and then reiterating that Dr. Mormon is our key contact and the decision expert on this matter.
That's right. So Dr. Mormon is telling us that he believes that students from K all the way through 12, in most cases, if they're capable of removing the mask themselves, they're within the CDC guidelines for the age groups that can wear facial coverings. And so we kind of understand that that may be a challenge at times, and we'll have some grace in that. But we really want to emphasize in our culture that as we each make that choice to wear masks, we are protecting those around us. And that, you know, we're all anxious to get back to school in-person learning. And doing that and wearing masks is one of the best ways we can protect our ability to stay in person where we know students thrive and we can provide the best educational opportunity we can for our students. So that's a great reminder, Dr. Clint Denning. Thank you for allowing me to emphasize that. It is very important. And again, we will certainly respond to the Health Department in making adjustments to that practice as the incidence of COVID cases in our community dictates.
Well, we have a requirement at recess.
Dr. Mormon has indicated that with the outdoors, the air changes that you get, just with the wind that blows through, you're constantly getting fresh air, and you really don't have the same level of concern outdoors as you do indoors. So although we would still kind of encourage kids not to kind of like really closely congregate, as Dr. Warland mentioned in her portion, we really believe that outdoors is a place where we can be more relaxed with those requirements and give kids a break, because it's going to be hard. We acknowledge it's going to be hard. We're going to need to do the best we can and practice a lot of grace. But that outdoor, those outdoor settings is where we can not have to worry about the facial coverings. We can be more relaxed on the social distancing, give the kids a break from the structure of social distancing that we're going to have to have indoors. Another great question, a great reminder there.
Jeff, are we going to like have the mask going to come in the building or bring your own from home? Or how is that going to work?
We're envisioning that students from, you know, as they arrive, will already have a mask. We're hopeful. We are providing, we have a number of community partners and things that are providing masks. We are creating an inventory of masks to provide to folks if they forget theirs on a given day. But obviously, that's a lot of days and a lot of people for us to provide a mask every day. So what we're going to encourage is for folks to find a mask that works well for them, that they can spend time in and have comfort with, that they can take care of laundering and taking care of. But that students and staff members would be prepared with a mask at all times so that when we're not able to maintain social distancing, that mask is ready to go on and help us stay safe.
Mr. Wagner, we've also had a company email me this weekend called So and Serve. And I want to thank Stephanie Zimmer, who brought them to us to begin with. They've provided all of our staff a mask right now. They reached out and said they would like to do the same thing for our student population. So I have to then tomorrow email them our projected enrollment, and they're going to try to get one mask, a cloth mask, pull the mask for every kid. So we are asking the parents, and I think other schools, and they'll see this, PTOs are helping. From the school side for our adults, we're providing three masks for our adults. A mask to wear, a mask to have, and a mask to wash. And we would ask parents to kind of follow that same model, to have three for their kids. And as Mr. Sewell said, we did purchase some disposable. The state purchased, I believe, 2 million to be distributed out to all schools for this very instance. And Mr. Sewell filled out a survey a week ago, I believe, or 10 days ago for our school district. So we are going to have masks, but we would encourage mom and dad to please get one that fits, that they like. You're going to hear also about special education in just a few moments. We know there are some kids that need a mask, that they can see their lips move to help with, you know, phonemes and things like that. And we are working with that. We actually have a local partner. And then Mr. Purley had a person reach out to him, two people making those specifically with vision shield guards inside so we can see mouths as well as wear masks.
Great questions. Glad to kind of expand on that. Okay, are we ready to talk about visitors and clinics? Let's talk about visitors. So our front offices are a hub of activity in our school buildings, both from internal traffic and from visitors coming into us to conduct a variety of business in our schools. And we, really, the more contact we have with outside folks or even inside folks, the more opportunity we have for those touchpoints to lead to transmission of sickness from one person to the other. So we're going to really, our building principals are kind of structuring their day-to-day school operations to kind of cut down that traffic that's moving through the front offices. And we are going to endeavor to serve the community members that do need to come to us outside or in a vestibule area where we're not bringing all of that traffic into our schools. Again, just trying to take every opportunity we can to maintain social distance and just minimize that mixing that could bring sickness into the school. Our clinics, we're going to have dedicated isolation spaces for people that are showing signs of communicable illness like COVID. Sometimes you can't tell whether it's just a cold or a flu thing versus you can't tell whether it's just a cold or a flu thing versus COVID. And so we're going to obviously err on the side of caution there. And as I think Dr. Worland mentioned, we're going to, we're going to have clinic assistance and separate isolation rooms to help make sure we have, have that, that problem kind of in a separate space where we can sanitize and take care of, of moving, moving people out of the building and home where they can recover as quickly and with as little contact with other people as we can. If we can move on to the next slide, I'm going to talk about transportation. So this is one that we have really wrestled with. The logistics, how do we get 5,000 people to school? And a lot of, a lot of you already bring your students to school for us, and that is very helpful. We're going to really, we're going to need more people to bring their students to school because we're going to have to limit the capacity of our buses. And we're, we're facial coverings on our buses. Drivers will be wearing facial coverings. We'll be traveling with the windows down. We'll be in assigned seats to do the best we can with busing. But we're going to really need the, the community to help us with this issue. If, ideally, you know, if we, if we, if we shift people away from buses into car rider lines, we make our car rider lines even, even more challenging than they are right now. So walking and riding bikes would be great things. Carpooling would be a great thing. Walking groups or biking groups would be a great thing to kind of really, as we look ahead to this next year and the challenge of, of social distancing and getting everybody to school safely, we really need the community's help. I'm thankful to have Mayor Barnett and Chief Cochran on the call with us this evening. Mayor Barnett has been very supportive as we look at some of the options there. Chief Cochran also very supportive as we, as we consider, how do we, how do we manage the safety issues around increased car traffic or walking and biking traffic? And so we'll be talking about that and working on that in the coming days and weeks as we tackle those challenges. One of the things we are looking at is the, the concept of walk zones where we don't provide busing services within a certain distance or proximity to our school buildings. Those are common in other communities, and they help transportation departments like ours that operate on limited budgets, budgets to make things works, work, make things work. And that's something we're studying right now because as we have to deal with the, the realities of operating with reduced numbers on our buses, we, we still need to get everybody to school and get all of their, their instruction time in. And so we're studying that issue. And we may come back to the board with a recommendation on that very soon. Again, the, the important thing though is to know, we're committed to getting students to school reliably and safely. And we, we're just going to really ask the community to come alongside us and really help us with those challenges in the coming year. All right, I feel like I'm hitting you with a lot of details, but we're going to keep plowing ahead here. The other place that will look a little different this coming year is in our cafeterias. Mrs. Overton, our food services direction director, and I have been talking about that for a number of weeks now. And she's done a great job really setting the stage for us to make those, continue to provide those excellent nutritional valued meals to our students. Still be offering some hot options in some of those meals. But everything's going to be prepackaged with disposable utensils and in a situ, in, in a format where we can either deliver those to, to eat in the classroom or be in a, in some school buildings, there'll be a grab and go situation where the kids will in kind of a socially distanced controlled manner, go to a station, grab a meal, and then go to an assigned seat or a location or maybe outdoors and enjoy their, their meal. But again, every place where we experience a congregation is something we have, have to worry about social distancing and so on, and obviously can't wear a facial, facial covering or a mask when you are eating. So we're, we've got a good framework and a good plan in place to help manage that issue and make sure everybody gets fed a nice breakfast and lunch every day in a, in a safe way.
Mr. Sewell, one thing I'd like to talk about both at lunch and on the bus, and that is seating. Students will not be allowed to, to roam around and, and pick a spot on the bus or pick a seat in the cafeteria. We will have assigned seats for all students during this COVID-19 era. And the reason we're assigning seats on the bus and in the cafeteria is for contact tracing. If something does, one of the things that Dr. Mormon and the CDC and Dr. Box from the Indiana Department of Health have said is that it's that six feet barrier for 15 minutes or more. If you've lived inside that, then we're going to have to move to isolation if that person will possibly have COVID-19. So with that, we need to be able to know that. So we are going to have contract, contact tracing teams that Mr. Sewell will lead, as well as Mrs. Martin, our school nurse, will help with some of those things as well. But we will have assigned seats both on the bus and in the cafeteria for all of our students, K to 12.
In classrooms too, I think, I think we'll, just in about every environment where we have students sitting in a replace, a place repeatable, it'll, it'll, there'll be an assigned seat there. So again, and that's where we'd like to make sure we are offering those outdoor breaks where we can relax that a little bit. So we're trying to balance that out and, and make, make life as livable as we can. All right. So I'm going to move on to the next slide. So we know that in spite of our best efforts, and Dr. Clendening has already kind of alluded to this, we're anticipating and we're preparing for the, the case of, of students or staff members having, you know, illness and being identified with as a positive case of COVID-19. And so we are working on, how do we manage that? And what is our response to that? And when the, when that occurs? And of course, we're going to look to the CDC guidelines on, on how we make decisions on when people should be excluded and when they are, should be allowed to return to work or to school. And of course, also, again, consulting closely with Dr. Mormon as we make those, those choices. But among the, the, the procedures we're putting in place, we're going to have a standardized health monitoring checklist and screening questions that we're going to ask parents to use before they even send kids to us. We're going to ask our employees to really assess, how am I feeling today? Should I be going to work today? Again, if, if we, if we can just stay home when we don't feel well, that, that really protects our ability to, to stay in our schools, where, where learning can, can occur most effectively. We will have protocols for reporting positive cases or presumed positive cases. And again, coordinating closely with the health department on that. We know in some cases, there may be illnesses where a physician, when they do a more in-depth diagnosis, might be able to clear somebody to come back to school or work ahead of like a 10 or 14 day isolation period, and we'll have guidelines for that. And then as, as we just talked about, contact tracing, another important feature of, of preventing and limiting the spread of, of a case. And we may have cases where we, we, we decide we've got a, a small group of closely, where close contact occurred. And as a precaution, we may, if the, if the health department advises to, we may ask some people to, to stay home and, and isolate till we can kind of watch that pass. Dr. Worland mentioned that we need to be prepared to transition back and forth from in-person learning to that at-home learning, whether it's a individual illness, or if we, you know, if we would have such a prevalence of cases that we have to transition entire schools to, to at-home learning. So we'll be, again, prepared to make that switch on, on short notice. And we'll have kind of our cleaning protocols and everything ready to go to get us back into in-person learning as, as quickly as we can.
Mr. Sewell, and Mr. Lamb was also on the call. We talked to Mr. Dr. Mormon about this. If we have a positive case, are we going to end up closing the entire school district if it happens at a building? Can you kind of walk us through what, what he was forecasting and sharing with us in that journey to help the community and our teachers understand what that would look like when you say we're going to go in and out, maybe in those type of things?
Right. I think as long as the prevalence in our community is, is not too high and, and the, the case, you know, an individual or small number of cases is identifiable and manageable, it can be a very focused and targeted exclusion for, for a small group of people. And you know, maybe even as few as one or two, two people, who knows? Again, that's where the, the circumstance will always be kind of fact sensitive. And we will, we will gather that sort of information and consult with Dr. Mormon about what is the prudent course of action to, to keep folks safe and to, again, sustain our ability to stay in school and where we can, we can grow kids. I think we, in any, any school year, we are constantly monitoring our attendance rates. And if there, there are state guidelines for when schools need to engage their local health department, and schools can be closed even during a flu season if their absence rates get too high, again, at the direction of the health department. So this year is, you know, obviously, a little bit more, that seems a little more likely than a typical average flu season. But those protocols are already in place and we are well versed in tracking attendance and, and coordinating with the health department on those issues. And that's Amanda Martin, our corporation nurse, is in regular contact with Dr. Mormon in the, in the hospital and really keeping a good finger on the pulse of how on sickness levels in our community. So we kind of, we kind of see it coming and can plan and, and prepare for that and take steps to, to try to avoid those school closures. But we're always ready to do that. Okay. Do you have one more here? I think I do. So the other, the other, the other way that people are anxious to get back to normal life is in our extracurricular activities. And I tell you, we, those are such a critical part of our sense of community in Franklin. It's, it's where we gather and we share life, and we encourage each other's children, and we encourage and root for our own kids. And we, and it's just such an important part of our community. And we are, we want to see that carry on to the fullest degree we can this school year. That said, we, we know that those events bring people together into large gatherings and in close contact. And so, so we're going to work, continue to work with Dr. Mormon and the health department to kind of do the best we can to, to allow those extracurricular activities to move board as, as close to normal as we can, but while also, but while also taking some good prudent steps to practice social distancing, maybe asking spectators and audiences to wear a facial covering or just other things that we can do, again, to help keep our community as at large safe, but also just to, again, to protect our ability to be in school and to even have the, the extra curric, the opportunity for these extracurricular activities. So our athletic directors and coaches and our ECA directors, band and choir and others are really investing many hours in, in studying the, the research and the available information guidelines on those things. So that we are, we are using the very best information possible as we make those decisions. And again, we couldn't, we couldn't be more appreciative of the, the time and the counsel of Dr. Mormon and the health department as we, as we walk this journey along those lines. So I think
I just want to talk about extracurricular for a second. On Monday, the sixth, we are opening backup school. Extracurriculars will begin, and Mr. Ahouse is on the line in our Zoom meeting to talk about this. But one thing that parents, if you have a student athlete that wants to participate, they have to fill out a form from the ISHA before they can participate on the sixth. And the coaches, I know there's been a lot of information shared. And Mr. Ahouse, is there anything else that the parents are going to need to know before the sixth to help their students and athletes get ready to, to begin at that secondary level?
The only thing at this time, I would just defer to all information that Bill Odey's gotten out through the athletic office. And he's put out information on that. And if not, contact them and, and the individual coaches. And I know band and choir and some of those other groups are kind of getting their plans together. So at this point, I, what you mentioned about the forum, and then of course, just contacting the athletic office or those individual programs on, on what their plans are.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. I didn't know that Mr. Odey said, for example, they're going to have like coaches huddles every morning, I believe, and ask the athletes, how are you feeling? Did you have a temperature? Is that, is that correct, Mr. Ahouse? And some of those quick reminders?
Yeah.
All right. Board, do you have any?
Mr. Sewell? Yeah. So what's your recommendation for those parents that are considering keeping their kids home for e-learning and participating in extracurricular activities?
You mean if they, they plan to stay home for e-learning, but they still want to participate in the, the extracurriculars? Did I understand that correctly?
Yes.
Yes. Yep. I don't, did we decide that? I don't remember. I'm sorry.
I'll talk, I'll talk a little bit. I think right now, Mr. Ahouse and I haven't a chance to touch base yet, but we want the kids that are going to participate in extracurriculars to attend school. If they're going to participate with us in the after school, we want to have them come to us. If parents choose that they need to stay home for their health and safety of their families, then I think that it's, it's, that's great. We just need to understand that, that as we go participate, outside sports and they're not, football is a contact sport. They're going to get to do that. So I believe that we're going to request that if you want to participate in an extracurricular activity, that you do come to school with us. And I know that, we're talking to other school superintendents, that is a very common practice that we're exhibiting that I'm sharing with you today about that.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yes. This is Becky Nelson. And if a student is, let's say they're sent home and they are experiencing some symptoms, would that student then need like a doctor's note to be able to come back to school? Or are they just going to be out for a certain number of days? What's the protocol there?
We're going to follow the CDC guidelines on that. And I think the, we would be going through a kind of a process of asking their, their family about the onset of symptoms and how much time has passed and so on, to, to help us make those decisions. Certainly a physician, a physician's note that kind of corroborates that and helps us make that decision would certainly be helpful. I, I don't know if Amanda or Dr. Clendening wanted to speak to whether we've been required that. I don't know that we, I don't recall whether we made a firm decision on that.
I'm going to let Amanda. She did have a meeting with the Johnson County nurses as well as Dr. Mormon. And they talked about sending some guidelines just as the superintendents got together a few weeks ago, and we released our guidelines to said, to say that we are going to monitor temperatures. But Amanda has the most updated information on that. And I'm going to refer to Mrs. Martin.
Can you hear me? My internet's not the best out here. So right now, we will be following the CDC guidelines. And so depending on the symptoms, it'll kind of depend on the exclusion. So I'll just use a fever, for example. Right now, if a student presents a fever, it's going to be a minimum of a 72-hour exclusion from school, where previously we were at 24 hours. If they are experienced one or more COVID symptoms, it's a 10-day absence. They'll be, unless they can present a doctor's note.
So 10 days from the onset of the symptoms is the guy, is the CDC guideline. So they would need to be, 10 days will need to have passed since the onset of the symptoms, or three days since the, the, the fever broke and they've stopped using fever reducing medicines, it would be the later of those two days. It would be the later of those two days. Is that correct?
And now for another example might be like, if a student is diagnosed with strep throat, they go to the, to their primary healthcare physician and they start an antibiotic and they can come back within 24 hours. So a lot of it is going to be a case by case situation. But we will follow the CDC guidelines and the DOE guidelines. And, you know, as this evolves, that those will, I'm assuming those might change as well. But that's what it currently states.
I think to address the core issue, we would not necessarily have a physician's opinion in every single case?
No, but if, if not, it'd be a 10-day out, the way it reads right now.
You'd apply the guideline, the CDC guidelines as they're written?
Yes, that's correct.
Yep.
I would also agree on the, the attendance letter. I know a lot of times parents will ask about this, like Mrs. Martin gets a lot of phone calls when parents say, well, I'm close to my seven or my, to my 10, what am I supposed to do? In this era of pandemic, Mrs. Martin?
Yeah. So we have a code that we currently use when we send a student home that meets our guidelines for, you know, was the 24-hour rule. So we will apply that into Power School. And we will work with the secretary of attendance, attendance, attendant secretaries in the building level as well as Mrs. Morrison to discuss that. There will be, I guess that would be, it would be excused if it's the school sending the student home for that. Does that make sense?
Grace will be extended. And I think that's the biggest thing that we'll hear all throughout the years. We're going to have grace. And we want to reiterate that the parents, please be proactive. If your kids are not feeling well, please have them stay home. And we'll continue to work with you and through Mrs. Martin, the building principals on that. But grace will be extended. Now, obviously if people just start missing school, then that's another issue, right? Then we'll continue to address that like we normally have. So thank you, Mrs. Martin.
Yes, thank you.
Are there any, any other questions before I hand it off to Mrs. Scott? All right, Mrs. Scott, I think that's your cue.
Perfect. Thank you. First of all, I want to thank my committee as well because special education is something you can kind of fall down into rabbit holes all day long, coming up with all the things that could potentially come up or questions that may come up. So they did a great job helping me out with this. So I do want to also point out that when we were meeting on this committee, it seemed like we kind of fell in with all the other committees. Like, oh, this is a technology issue. This is a operations issue. This is instruction. And so we, we really tried to stay out of, out of that lane as well, because we knew that was being covered. So number one, we have to make sure that our kids and our staff and anybody that comes in contact with us is safe, healthy. Because we can't do school if we're not healthy and our kids aren't healthy. So top priority for us is to make sure that we do everything we can to keep everybody healthy. With that said, when we were thinking about a goal, it kind of came down to in special education, we, we can't change what we're doing. So to create a goal, our goal is we are going to continue doing life in special education. And that is we're following the IEPs. But the only thing that's different is now we're putting all these precautions into place to mitigate, mitigate the virus, which is not something we've done before. We've not worn masks. We've not used face shields. We haven't used sneeze guards. We haven't tried to reduce those transitions. So, so all of those things will be put into place so that we can continue doing what we normally do in special education or in implementing 504s. We understood that federal and state laws didn't change for us. So we don't have the flexibilities to say, in light of COVID-19, we're going to do this in special education. So we have to continue doing, doing what we do. And that is push-in services, pull-out services, small group, one-on-one. Therapists will continue to do what they do in terms of, you know, PT and OT. And, and again, all of the, the PPE that's needed for that, they, they will use. Kind of touching base on laws, there, laws didn't change while we were closed. And there's no intention moving forward for the federal government or state government to make any changes. So as parents are starting to think about coming back to school, we're going to do what we do in special education. The, one question may come up about reviewing and revising IEPs. What I would say to teachers and parents is not every IEP needs to be revised. But if teachers get back to school and realize they weren't, we didn't make the progress that we needed to, or this goal is no longer appropriate, we're going to ask parents to come back to the table with us. That may be virtual, but coming back through a Google Meet and reviewing those IEPs. So I would also encourage parents, if they feel like something doesn't seem right or a change needs to be made, communicate with us. And that's a, that's a two-way street. We'll reach out to you if we need to make a change. But we also, if you feel like there's a change, please reach out to us. One of the things we talked about too on this committee as we looked at coming back to school as well as if we potentially have to be home, is making sure our kids and families have the resources that they need. And that looks different K-12. And I know as we move into Mr. Sprouse's technology, he's going to talk about technology for, for our kindergarteners that they have not had before. And so we want to make sure that our families are equipped. And that may be individual conversations with families if we have to go home again, to see what they need. And I'll give you a good example. Where we were one-to-one and we got all excited and we trained our teachers to, to do great things with kids at home. But what we found was not everybody responded to technology. And so we need to make sure we find out from families who paper and pencil would work better with. Or developmentally is paper and pencil better? Is the skill better, paper pencil? Not everything should be done on a computer with a six-year-old. So we'll have those conversations and identify those needs when we get back to school. And for many of them, we already know now because we've, we've lived it or lived it for a few months. I would say, you know, for, for me, the biggest thing is communication. Like I said, we have to follow IEPs and we have to kind of live our life like we were, but we're putting precautions into place this time. But I really want to encourage parents to reach out to us and start with your teacher of record. Any concern you have, any question you have, anything, reach out to them because they're the best person to start with. They know your kids and they can help probably answer questions quickly, but also schedule that case conference if we need it. I'm also going to, to encourage and really expect the teachers of record to amp up their communication with families. We're just, we're entering kind of a new territory. And, you know, our teachers do a good job of reaching out when they have questions, scheduling conferences, sending progress reports home. But I think it's going to be really important that, that we increase that a little bit to make sure that we all know still what's going on in our daily lives. And so that's, that's really it for special ed. Because like I said, we have, we have to do our life. We don't, we're not making any changes. Are there questions about special ed? Well, I hear the crickets. So with that, we will move on to Kim Spurling and socially emotional learning.
And everybody- Yay. So thank you so much for this opportunity to share FCS SCL's team's recommendation plan. I wanted to start off the conversation by quoting the IDOE regarding COVID-19 and social emotional learning. IDOE quotes or stated, SEL has moved from a nice to-do to a must-do in preparing for student and staff return to the 2020-21 school year. Further, the National Association for School Psychologists states that social, emotional and mental wellness of each child must be considered before any academic advancements or remediations take hold. So with both of those statements, you can see that there is a huge emphasis and priority that will be made by FCS in order to implement and integrate social emotional learning into our district-wide and building levels. I myself share this strong belief as does our SEL reentry team. Our mental health subcommittee is where, as well as our mental health oversight committee. And you will see from the goal outlined in our reentry plan as well as on the PowerPoint that our goal states to integrate social emotional learning and mental wellness across the district, prioritizing student and staff healing and psychological safety. So we believe very strongly that we can accomplish this by building, by creating, building level social, emotional and mental wellness teams. And these teams will be tasked with communicating a very clear message that social, emotional learning and mental wellness are paramount to the success, to the holistic success of students and staff, whether implemented onsite or virtually. These teams are going to include myself as well as other internal and external stakeholders that will be decided by each building. Recommendations have been provided and they include, but are not limited to principals, vice principals, deans, school counselors, school nurses, behavior interventionists, teachers, parents. And if possible, we really hope to incorporate school-based staff or the team lead from adult and child, which is our community mental health agency partner. These teams could be the same or similar to the kids' teams that already exist within each building level right now. The focus of these teams will be to work collaboratively to implement social emotional learning, utilizing a multi-tiered system of support. As you can see from the infographic, it demonstrates how SEL or how, how, there's a lot of acronyms. I apologize. How Franklin Community Schools will prioritize and implement student SEL and mental wellness using this particular framework. I will not go into the weeds about a lot of this information, but just staying at a high level. For tier one supports, these are going to be lessons and activities that are going to be implemented to all students. They're going to hopefully be provided during classroom instruction. And that's whether it's going to be onsite or virtual. And the emphasis is going to be based on school counselors as well as teachers providing these lessons. There's a recommendation of what it should look like. For instance, at the elementary level, we're thinking that it should be a daily recommendation so that kids at that level are getting social emotional learning during circle time or morning meetings, whatever, you know, each building decides to call it. But we feel like it should be daily. At the intermediate level, we feel very strongly that it should be provided at least three times per week, whether that be in circle time, morning meetings, or whatever the building levels decide. For the middle school and the high school, we really feel like social emotional learning should be implemented at least one time per week. And again, that could be done during coach, gym classes, health classes. There's a lot of different opportunities that we will be able to figure out and identify how to implement it at a minimum of one time per week during the middle school and high school. When you're looking at tier two and tier three level, those are more intervention-based. Tier two is provided for some students. It is typically provided individually or in targeted small groups. And we can definitely do that whether onsite or in virtual settings by using Google Classroom. Tier three interventions, this is going to be a little bit more difficult to provide virtually because it's very intensive and it's usually one-on-one. Best results are if it's provided onsite and face-to-face, but it can be done virtually. But we will work very hard to identify how to make that successful if that's needed. And the most important part is whether onsite or during at-home learning, FCS will utilize evidence-based programs such as Second Step, Suite 360, EverFi. The IDOE has an amazing toolkit that they have provided and other resources to provide SEL curriculum. But regardless to the delivery and regardless to whomever is providing the lesson, the lessons must create opportunities for students to discuss, reflect and process the content. That is absolute. This is essential as it will help foster healthy student and staff relationships, build trust, a sense of belonging and emotional safety in the classroom and just across the district period. Now just switching gears a little bit to teachers. I am a firm believer that if we want emotionally healthy students, we absolutely must have emotionally healthy teachers. And so similar for our students, intentional structures will be identified and implemented at the building level by the SEL mental wellness teams. There will be a strong emphasis on opportunities for teachers and staff to reconnect and reflect and process their emotions that have occurred while they were away and just new things that are going to happen as the struggles that they, you know, may encounter in the classroom. Was, there's going to be a lot to absorb from, teachers going, teachers are going to have a lot to absorb emotionally and behaviorally from students as they return to school. There's additionally going to be a strong emphasis on promoting a culture that reduces stigma and increases awareness for self-care and strong mental wellness. We need teachers to hear and have that permission that says, go get help. You should go get help. Don't try to do this alone. Reach out to your support teams and whomever they may be to get the help that you need. We're also going to increase self-care assessments, guidance, referrals, resources and support. We're going to, I will be able to provide increased education on mental health and wellness supports via the FCS Connect website, our brochure, our weekly newsletter and on social media. And I'm also working on a plan to help streamline some access to mental health supports for our teachers and staff, whether that be support groups, weekly, daily, monthly, however needed check-ins, or even community referrals with licensed professionals. Professional development opportunities will also be emphasized. One, to learn so that we can provide teachers with the opportunity to learn how to integrate SEL into the classroom instruction and incorporate it with academic content as well as increase social, emotional, mental wellness for themselves. So that sounds like a lot of stuff, but I really believe that we can do this when, when we work collaboratively and we work very intentionally together. And lastly, is just really just talking about some of the mask and sanitizing recommendations. So obviously as we move to work in schools during COVID-19, students are still going to need to come down to the office and meet with their counselor, their school counselor or adult and child for additional support. So masks are going to be highly encouraged when you're in that one-on-one setting, especially when the door is closed. In some settings that when there is space that allows it, and if you can practice social distancing, then, you know, masks could be optional. But otherwise, definitely if you're in that small space, other masks should be worn. Other items like sensory rooms and objects, fidgets, things that counselors, teachers and whatnot may have on their desks or, you know, teachers may have in their classroom. This is going to be a tough one because we know that kiddos need these sensory objects in order to self-regulate. And so we're going to have to be very mindful and, you know, only provide things that can be easily sanitized, gifted to students or that can be thrown away. And that's going to kind of take precedent over whether you're in the counseling room and your classroom and whatnot. Students and staff should also, when they're interacting with our awesome therapy dogs, as you can see from the picture here, that's a picture of Millie and Hero. And they are definitely going to be a part of our social emotional learning journey. So they're going to be placed obviously in Northwood and Webb Elementary. But there will be some opportunities for the dogs to go outside and meet with students in other buildings. And so at all times, we really want students and staff to wash their hands prior or use hand sanitizer before interacting with the dogs and after interacting with the dogs. And that'll just help mitigate, you know, any germ spreading and, and whatnot. But other than those, other than that, I am open for questions.
Okay. Wonderful, Lon. Now I'm going to turn it over to Matt Sprout for technology. Thank you.
Well, the disadvantages of going last is it can feel a bit dry. The great thing is I'm about to talk about technology, which is absolutely exciting. So get on the edge of your seat, get ready and we're going to have some fun. So technology, in all honesty, is our support. All the great folks that you just heard- All the great folks that you just heard speak, our job is to support them. We talked about the K1 students receiving Chromebooks. That's in support of every student not touching every keyboard and mouse. That's improving the curriculum. That's improving the academic side of it. So no matter where a student finds themselves, that they're at school, they need to be home for one reason or another, technology is going to play a component. And that's also going to be true for the teachers. As our committee spoke, we talked about that communication and that communication from administrator to teacher, teacher to student, and even teacher to parents. What does that look like? What are the expectations and how are we going to facilitate that? And so whatever scenario we spoke about, we find that we found ourselves coming back to communication and relying on it to achieve our goals. Students will not share devices in supporting our teachers and our administrators and our schools and social distancing. We are going into each and every classroom. We're removing every computer, usually six or seven years old. In the elementary classroom, we keep them until they literally have nothing left, but we're going to remove those. And that's going to create the ability to spread the desk out, create social distancing. Because we are one-to-one in grades K through 12, at the elementary school, we had carts in every single classroom. Those are no longer needed because every Chromebook K through 12 is going to go home every night. And so that opportunity provides there. And then in addition, at the elementary schools, we are dissolving the labs to provide another classroom-type space for teachers. So just as an example, although we are, technology, our goal is to support whatever scenario we end up in, which as you heard is pretty fluid, which is going to make our task quite complex. So really excited about the opportunity. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Sprout. And I want to thank the team for sharing their findings of their work. I just want to quickly summarize a couple of key points and then we'll make sure we all come back to that. One is that we are going to provide both onsite and virtual learning opportunities for all of our families. And there's a survey coming out to help us understand that. Masks are going to be required at certain specific times throughout the journey. That's on the bus, when you come to school, when you leave school, when you're in the hallway, and when that social distancing gets evaporated, we're going to have to have those masks on. And also, you heard that we're going to encourage parents to help with transportation, and Mr. Sewell articulated walk zone. In the July board meeting, we're going to come back with some more information about that from the survey to help us understand, but we need the parents to help us gather that information. So on that survey, if you have one, two, three, four kids, how many kids that go to our school district, we need the parents to each, to respond to each student's need. So please fill out that survey by the number of students you have in your family that attend our schools. We do have a lot of opportunities and we're continuing to provide that learning environment that is rich and robust during this COVID-19 era. I want to remind everything that Dr. Warhol said, that we're going to need to be flexible. We're going to need to understand that if the virus escalates or when it declines, we're going to be moving to different changes and opportunities. And so tonight, as we hear information, the board is receiving this information, but they're not voting on our plan because our plan could change. Our plan could change in two weeks or three weeks based on the data that we see. But we'll continue to share with the board and the community what's before us and how we're doing in these domains. Regarding communication, this presentation, both in recorded form as well as the PowerPoint, will be posted to the website, the PowerPoint tomorrow. The video as soon as we can get it processed and moved up. And then each individual school has created a plan that drills down further into these specific areas. We're going to be sending those out later this week. The building principals are on tonight to listen, and if there are any questions that they need to respond to, they'd be more than happy to fill in. But once they have their plans, please reach back out to them in specific details. They match what we're talking about. They're looking at how to help those kids. We want to make sure that we're providing that safe environment that mitigates the virus and that everyone is being honored. And, you know, we want to make sure that the staff feels safe, the faculty feels safe as they come to school to help deliver in this 2021 school year. So with that, I just want to thank everybody again. I'll turn it over to Mr. Land for any questions for any of us this time.
Thank you, Dr. Clendenning. I'll open up for the board. Any questions from the board members?
Yeah, I have just one question. If a parent chooses, and I don't know whether we covered this and maybe I just, there was so much information, but if they choose to do the at-home learning, do we have any parameters of how long they have to do that? Can they come and go throughout the semester? Or is it just you choose it and, you know what I mean?
Great question, Kristi. This is Brooke. I'm going to take the first attempt at this. We have talked about that. The academic committee actually spent some key time on that very question. Our recommendation, our proposal is that families will not be allowed, students will not be allowed to journey back and forth. I'm on virtual, now I'm at school, I'm on virtual, I'm at school. We are allowing parents, families to make those decisions through the survey and ask school starts, are you choosing a virtual format or an onsite? We are asking them that they stay in that format for the semester. Now, if a student, Kristi, if a student gets sick or is quarantined because a family member is sick, that's a different situation.
Right. Okay.
Be a choice, a parental choice or a guardian's enroll their student in the virtual format versus the onsite format.
Very good. Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Any other questions from the board?
No questions, just a lot of gratitude. Thank you for all your work in putting this together. It was, it was a, you can tell you put a lot of effort into it, so thank you.
Mr. Land, before we go to the community, I want to first acknowledge that Mayor Barnett has been on throughout the journey today, listening to our reentry plan, and want to thank him for his support. We've had conversations, both he and I, and Mr. Sewell has reached out to Mayor Barnett and Chief Cochrane, and just want to thank him and see if the mayor has any questions or comments about our reentry plan, because he's probably going to get a lot of phone calls too. Knowing how it works, he'll get a few asking about our school stuff. So mayor, any questions or thoughts?
No questions at this time. I think I'll get with, we'll get with Jeff and yourself, Dr. Seawell, about what it looks like, the walk zones and that. But again, I'm with Ryan. I just want to say you can tell that the school corporation has put a lot of time and effort into this, and I think you got a good plan. And I just, I know that things change. It changes here with us daily, so I get it. So anyway, thank you, the school board and the corporation for what you've done and trying to get us back to somewhat of the new normal, I guess it is. So thank you very much.
Thank you, mayor. Chief Cochrane, any comments to add as you've helped us through the process?
I think Kirby left us.
Oh, did he? Okay.
Yeah, I think he had to go.
Okay, so let's open it up for the public for questions or comments. I think to help the process, if you would use the chat feature, list your name, and that way Robin can call you so we can make sure that we cover everybody's questions.
My first question comes from Kim Lock. She wants to know what will be expected of siblings in regards to attendance when one child is home for 10 days due to symptoms and there are other school-aged siblings in the household.
Brooke, you want to take that one first?
I was actually going to check with Jeff and Amanda because I, I think we're probably going to follow the CDC guidelines and the guidelines from the Indiana Department of Ed.
Yeah. That is correct.
Yes, so.
Amanda, that's, yeah.
I'm agreeing on that. So if a student is quarantined, the siblings as well are quarantined in the same household.
Same household, yep.
Yep. And will they receive some sort of online learning during that time?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yes. And the sibling would also be coded under our nurse codes for attendance as well because that would be on the guidelines.
That would be an example of when we would make it permissible so they go in and out of our school setting. If they've elected to be in person and they have to go out for those 10 days, we'll continue to provide services, patient services, and then they can come back when they're free
Andy from the Daily Journal wants to know, how will the desks be oriented and spaced?
Yep, we mentioned that earlier, but glad to answer that again. The desks will be oriented towards the front of the classroom. That's typically where the whiteboard or blackboard and the projector in each classroom is oriented. And we have gone through every classroom or maybe few, we're still in the process of removing extraneous furniture and spacing those out to the greatest degree we can. So the spacing varies from classroom to classroom, but we are able to, through a combination of trying to keep our class sizes down and removing extra furniture, able to achieve nice spacing in the classrooms.
And we will have protective shields for small group and teacher interaction, for both teachers and students. Mr. Sewell's working on with the building principals. So that's another precaution that we are going to have to mitigate this spread of the virus if you're going to look at room orientation.
I don't see any other questions at this time.
All right, thank you. Give it here just a couple of minutes in case someone thinks of something.
We will be back to regular school board meeting on July the 13th. It's a little late. It's the second, that's when the second Monday is of the month. It will be a little longer board meeting than a normal typical July meeting. We are going to hear from Mr. Spurling again regarding a new state law with where we have to partner with a third party for SEL and some options and opportunities with regard to that aspect. And we are going to discuss walk zones again on that date. Mr. Sewell will have that information as well as we'll met with Chief Cochrane and Mayor Barnett and continue to look at that. I just want to reiterate to everybody that tonight, as you hear the information, the questions come up, please reach out to us, the building principal, central office team, the FCScommunication@franklinschools.org is a great website also to reach that. We are going to have a frequently asked questions session. And one of the things that we're going to do is date and timestamp the question when it comes in so that anybody can see if it's new and when it was presented to us. We're building it already, so we'll see the first phase of that coming out with our plan. And then Mr. Bets will be the moderator and help us share that information. If parents have questions after tonight, please get those to us. Follow our emails or our last name, first initial, or give us a call. We'll be glad to share information on that. And we'll look forward to partnering with moms and dads in this journey. And as we started, we want to give them information tonight so we can make the best decision for their family. Robert, I think we have another question come up. Is that right?
I do have one more question. Debbie Baldred, she's our high school choir booster president, so I can only imagine the time spent there. But she wanted to know, do we have any guidance yet on whether parent volunteers will be allowed to work in the buildings at all? I know you touched briefly on that, but we typically start at seven, so we had some latecomers.
I'll take a crack at that one. We, I don't ever want to say never. I think we, as we've said before, it's a little bit difficult as we, because we're a little bit more than five weeks out to forecast what exactly the circumstances we're looking at will be when we return to school. I think that'll be one of those closer to game time decisions we will make as we consult with Dr. Mormon and kind of see how cases are progressing in the, in the community and whether we're on a decline or on an increase in those cases. I think certainly we recognize and certainly value the efforts and the many, many hours that volunteers in all areas of our corporation put in to help us make our student experiences what they are. And certainly, we don't take lightly the concept of excluding volunteers. And I think as we navigate this journey though, we're going to have to weigh the benefits versus the risks. And I think there'll be room for some volunteers in key roles and key areas of support, but we are going to be very thoughtful in how we go about doing that and what that looks like. Again, right there in close contact, in consultation with Dr. Mormon.
I do know that one program that we are going to have unfortunately hit pause on at least his first semester is the Study Buddy Program. That is something we've worked with the Franklin Education Connection and Mr. Huddleston. I know that Mr. Wagner and Mrs. Gross and Mrs. Bets are on that committee. And looking at that, we are going to hit pause for this first semester. We'll continue to reevaluate that. Now, you know, as Mr. Wagner has created and helped us envision this first scholars program, I do believe we're looking at some alternative ways to connect with those kids. So the program will still continue to move forward in having their mentor work with their mentee, but it won't be an in-person setting in this first semester, and then we'll continue to reach out to Dr. Mormon and share information.
Okay, any other questions? So again, I'd like to thank everybody that was on the panel tonight, the principals for the hard work that you've done. August 5th is going to be here before we know it. So for everybody that's online, please keep checking the Franklin website for information as the Dr. Clendenning and team, as they push out new information, just send out the details from tonight. And please respond to that survey. We need that in by next Monday. If there are no other questions, we will adjourn the meeting tonight, and thanks again for everyone for attending.
Thank you.
Thank you.